Welcome to the Board of Education's December 2nd, 2024 Work Session. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the pledge led by Ms. Pike.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. Board members, one announcement. As directed in our resolution to meet the clothing needs of Knox County students adopted on November 4th, I'm appointing the following to the Clothing Center Committee. Board members Lauren Morgan, Anne Templeton, and Steve Triplet, and KCS staff members Cory Lotner and Adrian Rutger. That's our only announcement, short and sweet tonight. Are there any requested changes to this meeting agenda? Motion by Mr. Triplet, second by Ms. Christie. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right. Dr. Ryswick.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving last week and the opportunity to spend meaningful time with their family and loved ones. Around this time of year, many of our schools host and bring in families, staff, and students together. As a community, we are incredibly fortunate to have so many families make the effort to be involved. These moments of connection remind us of the vibrant communities that make our district so special. So it's always a good time of year. We'll see that a lot of the schools, especially in the next coming weeks. Lots of folks coming in and enjoying the holidays. Wanted to mention a principal for a day. We had that celebration a little before we broke for Thanksgiving. So we're fortunate to have a number of ways to engage our community. One of those being through the Principal for a Day program, which was held on November the 19th. On this day, leaders from across the community visited classrooms across the district to gain a firsthand look at the inner workings of our schools. The program concluded with a luncheon that was attended by around 250 participants. I'd say this is one of the largest ones we've had, back to kind of folks being engaged. It was great to see. During that celebration, a total of $26,000 was distributed across the five regions, with each principal receiving funds to invest in school improvements. Thank you to our partners in education and members of our team for hosting this event, and to Teresa Smith from WATE, the news anchor, for serving as an engaging host to make the event a success. I'll say this real quick, for those of you who were able to attend, thanks for being there. It was really neat for me just to be able to hear people tell stories about their schools, and especially about the leaders of their schools, the principals, just what they do every day and how they were kind of blown away by the efforts that they have to make sure. That's kind of, I get to see it every day and you guys get to see it, but to hear members of the community say that was really, was really special. Last thing I have is just as we close out the calendar year, I continue to be blown away by the hard work of our students and staff. Their dedication is at the heart of everything we do. While their commitment has led to many accomplishments this year, three have stood out to me in particular. One is reducing classroom teacher vacancies and ensuring students experience uninterrupted instruction and a stable classroom environment is one of those. I think we've already seen in this first semester, in the last couple of years, the burnout, the absentees on Fridays, things like that are not happening like they were because we've been fully staffed. Second is increasing intentional career exposure through the 865 Academy's Guaranteed Experiences, which has given students more opportunities to figure out their path in life before graduation. Dr. Wilson and I stopped by the chamber on the way here for one of their members is retiring, and we got to stop by before we came. And already, there were CEOs there that kept coming up to Keith and I saying, "Hey, we got to get on the agenda to do this, we got to get more business." So it's really, it's kind of cool to see these CEOs really on fire about getting our kids, and they keep telling me, you know, "This is selfish on our part because we're trying to raise the next workforce and bring them in," which, again, I think our families appreciate as well. And the final one I just want to bring attention to are the early literacy scores, which are critical to the foundation of our kids. We've hit kind of record highs in our third and fourth grade proficiency right now. And it's neat to hear, I know Erin Phillips is in the back, it's neat to hear what she's been saying for the last couple of years, and it's neat when I go meet with teachers at schools to hear them sound like little errands, right? They're saying, "Hey, we're using QSA's and we have high-quality instructional materials, and our plan is going to..." You know, it's neat to hear them excited telling me about what I know has been a very intentional plan to try to get them what they need to reach kids, and that's when you know it's working. So very, very thankful for that. So, good time to reflect. Last thing I want to say is looking ahead, winter break's just around the corner. Just want to remind folks that the last day of this semester is a half-day on December the 20th, and students will return on January 6th, so less than three weeks with a late Thanksgiving. And with that, Madam Chair, concludes my report.
It is so crazy we're halfway through the year. And I love little errands, that makes me happy, I love it. Steve, do we have a legislative update?
Yes, we do. At everybody's place, I think Ms. Cote put together the legislative priorities from last year. And so, we will be voting in January on the next round of legislative priorities. One of the challenges I think we've had in the past that we've done really well in recent years is kind of making this, changing this every year to match what we want to do, rather than just kind of leaving the same language over and over again. So, I challenge you to read through what's there. You can look at TSBA's website and look at their legislative priorities, think through things on your own. One of the things we made, I think, a fairly conscious decision last year was to keep it at one page. You know, our senators and representatives get lots of paperwork, so, you know, I don't know that they're going to actively read through a three or four-page document. So just thinking through the priorities that really matter and making it a one-page document. The way we've done in the past, and we'll do it again, is to send any suggestions you have to Ms. Cote, and then she'll print out, compile all those, print them out, and we'll have them at that, at our work session in January. So, so send all, any suggestions, any ideas you have, and kind of think through the wording of it, rather than just kind of a one statement, "I'd like to support this." Think through how that would work in the legislative priorities, how that wording would work, and we can refine it and that kind of thing, but just getting some sort of, some things down. So, there are lots of things that are kind of in the works if you were at the TSBA meeting. There's talk of cellphone, you know, some cellphone restrictions in schools coming, that kind of thing. So there are some things that are coming down the pike that would affect what we do. So, take a look at what TSBA has and what we have, and then just think through what you want, and you can send those to Ms. Cote. So, any questions on that? That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks. And I do want to echo what Steve said. I think we've gotten, we're in a good place where we do use this as a working, living document versus what he said, just kind of passing the same document year after year. So I do like that this changes every year. And then also, I'll get with Ms. Cote. For the new board members, we usually do a breakfast or lunch with our state delegation, and we kind of use this to guide our conversation during that meal with them. So I'll get with her, that's usually in, I think, January, right before the session starts. So, I'll get working on that as well. Ms. Christie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And our Strategic Plan Committee update. I'm glad to report that our Strategic Plan Services partner Accenture LLC is in the full swing of their work, and hopefully each of you have had the opportunity at this point to meet with them one-on-one to provide input. We will also be receiving the final report on our stakeholder engagement surveys from Milan, Chicago at the beginning of our regular session meeting on Thursday. So the committee is pleased that we are on schedule to bring our next five-year plan for your consideration in the spring. And we currently do not have a committee meeting on the calendar as of today, but we, of course, will announce any future meetings as they are scheduled.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on to our regular session agenda. Move on to those items, doodle-doo. Okay. Do we have any questions, discussion on item 6C? Items 1, 2, or 3? Those are just on one page, so I'm just going to go 1, 2, 3 with those. All right, moving on to number 4 or 5? 6 or 7? 8 or 9? Number 10? All right. Moving on to board policies, 7A or B? Ms. Templeton?
I would like to further, have a conversation further about B.
Okay.
So do we want to move past A, or?
What's that? No, I see, Ms. Pike, do you want to talk about B? Okay.
She's in for B?
No discussion on A.
Nobody has anybody on it?
Yeah, no A.
Going once, going twice? Okay. Great. Do you want me to go ahead and start, or Kat? Ms. Pike, my apologies. Okay, yeah, I wanted to quickly bring that up. I'm going to pull it out of my folder, so I can look that up. Yeah, there are a couple of things in here that I did want to talk through. I have more comments to make about C and D, but they all kind of line up together because I wanted to just discuss the removal of the federal protections clause as it's stated, and the recommendation from the Law Department was to replace it with "on any basis." I really wanted to take ideology completely out of it and really look at how it's being done and make sure that we're all on board with the structure and the potential implications long-term. And I did have a really good conversation with Mr. Dupler before the holiday, so I'll kind of defer to you on some of the questions that you and I had talked about because it was very enlightening and helpful. But one of the primary issues that I have is the phrase "on any basis." Fundamentally, it lacks no legal definition. So, it's a phrase that was used, and quite frankly, in the court of law, there's no legal precedent at all. So, for example, we could be in a situation that, you know, if there is any kind of discrimination wrought against the school system on race, we have a litany of case law to lean back on to defend our case, right? With any kind of race, with sex, whatever it happens to be, religious beliefs. All of these have been litigated at nauseam in the courts. So, the concern is that "on any basis" has no legal definition as it stands. And I do believe that our legislature is not trying to, you know... I believe that they're trying to encompass everyone, but they have not fully formulated the definition yet. And over time, I think that they potentially will. They'll give us more definition of what "on any basis" means. But right now, if we have to defend it, we don't have any case law to be able to do that. The second reason is that "on any basis" doesn't protect teachers. And fundamentally, that's a very real problem. And when I look at playing it all out, right? "On any basis" means exactly that. And let's say a student gets a grade on a paper that they don't like, and they say, "Well, you've discriminated against my paper because I didn't agree with what you said." So if I say Tennessee Williams is the best author there ever was, and my teacher says, "No, it's Maya Angelou," or, you know, any other author, and there's a disagreement. So truthfully, "on any basis" could be all about viewpoint. Is that really how far we want to take this? So I think that to not have the clarity in our policies is very, very important, or at least together, right? So, we can satisfy our state and our federal, but really, more than anything else, it's just protecting us from opening ourselves up for more litigation than we ever have before. So I think that's important to note. And then my third reason is that we were not directly told by the legislature to do this. And in our case law, I mean, in our legislative body, the federal protections clause still exists. It has not been completely eliminated. It exists, and I am more than happy to send that to anybody who would like it. But it still exists in the code, and if it was completely eliminated and it was very, very clear that this is something that they want us all to do, then when we got to do it, and I am on board with doing what the legislature tells us to do, 100%. But in this case, we were not directly told to do it. And Mr. Dupler and I did talk, and I asked him if other school boards are making this change, and it seems that they are not. So, they do not feel like we are actually being told to do it either. So, those are my three reasons of why practically I'm not convinced that this is really the intent of our legislature for us to change all of our student policies in this way.
Ms. Pike?
Thank you. I think my points are adjacent, that, I mean, we all know what I think about this, but, because, you know, we've talked about this a ton. And I'm sorry that it took me until now to kind of bring some other school boards in Tennessee and locally to us. Sometimes I think that that's the work that we do individually as board members, is to kind of look and see what other people are doing. But the board members have in front of them three policies from Marivale City Schools, from Hamilton County Schools, and from Anderson County Schools. And I felt like these were a good example of just all the different diversity aspects that are also within Knox County. So we've got city, we've got one that's kind of a larger metropolitan, and then we also have one that's a little bit more rural. And I understand that a lot of them take their language from TSBA, but I think TSBA, I really respect TSBA, the Tennessee School Board Association, as a nonpartisan organization that does really great work for public schools across the state of Tennessee. And so, I just want to point out, and kind of off of what Ms. Templeton said, of taking that language out and having "on any basis" kind of removes the teeth of what you could use these policies for. And I think that that's really unfortunate and is not really serving our students or our teachers. But if you're looking at the Marivale City Schools, one, I mean, even in the title, it says "sexual, race, racial, ethnic, or religious." But on line 7, you know, it also lists them. But what I really appreciate about this one is lines 9 through 13, where it kind of goes a little bit deeper. And I'm not really sure that ours does that. I understand that we have a lot of references, but I think that if we are going to eliminate those things, that we also have to have other definitions on what is discrimination, what is harassment, and what does that look like if we're not going to name kind of the more typical ways a person is harassed or discriminated against. And I understand, and then to flip, what I also appreciated about, let's see, I think it's Anderson County Schools, no, no, it's Hamilton County Schools. Page 3 of 4, lines 4 through 7, you know, they have Title VI Coordinator, Title IX Coordinator, 504 Coordinator, but they also in parentheses kind of outline what those are related to. Race, color, national origin, sex, disability. And I think that that is a really great way to make it clear. And if we're going to kind of eliminate that and say "on any basis," there are so many people, I would even... people, I would even venture to say most people, don't know what a 504 Coordinator is, or what a Title IX Coordinator is, or what Title IX is for, or what Title VI is for, or Title I, or any of the titles. They just, you know, they're like, "Ah, it's one of those." So I think having it clear is really important. Yeah, and then also for Hamilton County, page four of four, the areas, and I know this is a little bit more related to students, lines 14 through 25, where it also goes a little bit deeper, talking about the developmental level of maturity and maturity levels of parties involved. And I understand that some of that might be in our procedures, but I think if we're going to eliminate and put "on any basis," that then we have to bring some of this into our policy. So I think that's something for people to think about. Thank you.
Mr. Dupler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Ms. Templeton said, we did have a good conversation last week. And as a result of that conversation, I reached out to several colleagues to check and see what, you know, what other attorneys were looking at on this. And I also looked at various other policies from other districts. I did see the Marivale one, and Anderson County tracks of TSBA, which a lot of districts do, including, you know, numerous ones in our area, Loudoun, Union, Jefferson, I mean, I could go on and on. But, you know, the big difference that I saw with those other districts is that their policies are structured differently, and the whole manual is really structured differently than Knox County's. Knox County has this whole section that's devoted to students. And if you look at, we're looking at J-110 right now, but I mean, the other policies are the same type of issue. It calls out all students. I mean, that's what it calls out. And when I look at these other policies from these other districts, they'll put in a policy that says a general statement of policy. And this is in, you know, harassment of employees, similar to the Marivale City one. You know, and it says this general statement, "The school system prohibits any form of discrimination, harassment based upon sex, race, national origin, creed, religion, age, marital status, or disability." So when I look at that, I would tell this board the same thing. If this board wants to put in a general statement similar to that, which includes Title VII, you know, which includes employees, I mean, it doesn't just include students. Your policy right now says "students." That's what it says. So if you wanted to include a general statement at the beginning for everybody in the school system, then certainly this language from these other districts would apply. The other thing is, when these other districts refer to the teacher code of ethics, which is what the legislature changed, and let me say that again. We're just trying to interpret what the legislature did. The legislature decided to change the teacher code of ethics, which applies to educators in Knox County and all these other counties. But the language that a lot of these other counties have used is that, you know, teachers and educators will adhere to the teacher code of ethics. So that's what they've said. So by saying that, whatever the teacher code of ethics says, that's what they have to abide by. Well, right now, the teacher code of ethics says "on any basis." As Ms. Templeton said, does that open up all the counties, whether they have it in policy or not, to potential additional litigation? It's possible. There's no doubt, that's possible. But I'm not going to interpret what a court may do with this new law. I mean, you know, and that's where we are. But bottom line is, I mean, if the board wants to make changes to its policy in addition to what's changed, or, you know, do something different, I mean, you are, you all are the policymakers. One other thing that we talked about, and I need to mention, is, was, we were talking about, and this appears in two of the policies, students may report anonymously, and anonymous reports will be treated with the same level of urgency as all other reports. That came from Chelsea Price, you know, who's the Officer for Student Success and Advisory and Improvement. And I certainly agree with that, I mean, with that language, and I know, you know, Chakovia, our Title IX Coordinator, does as well. But Chelsea suggested maybe a modification to that language at the end to make it more clear, to say that what we're really talking about is investigated with the same level of urgency. So in other words, if it's anonymous, I mean, once you investigate it, it may not turn out the way that, you know, someone would turn out that's not anonymous, right? But the urgency to investigate it, to get on it and try and figure it out is still there. So that was, that was the one change that, I mean, you know, regardless of whatever the board wants to do, I would recommend that, and that's at line 11 on J-110, change the end of that line to "investigated with the same level of urgency."
Okay. Anyone else? Any discussion on this? Reverend Butler?
So I spoke on this before in that the federal law is still there. So even if we take the language out, the federal law is still there. I think there are a number of people, and I don't have a percentage, and I don't have a number, but there's a number of people who are concerned about this language coming out because it speaks to a weakening of concern or care that Knox County schools have about discrimination or harassment. Because when you take out those things that have been defined as if they're no longer are harassment or discrimination. So that message, whether it's intentional or not, is something that people are, some people are seeing and feeling, especially those who have been discriminated against as a group, and feel like they continue to be discriminated against. One of the things I said, as I looked at it, because there are some folk who feel like, because I'm from a group that's named there, I should speak out more about it. But I had two thoughts about it. Number one thought was, what I've said already, is that the federal law is still there. And it'll be there as long as it's there. But also, it's been written in that for years. The policy has been there for years, and discrimination and harassment still goes on and has gone on. The real test is gonna be, whatever words we put there, is that when discrimination is reported, we are sincere, and we are authentically going to investigate it. This is a matter that I take personal because for eight years I served as the Knox County President of the NAACP. So I constantly, weekly, receive complaints, not just with Knox County School, but everything in Knox County and Knoxville. Some were investigated, and we found to be, what we determined to be true, and we worked with the organizations to resolve it. And others were not. But what I would encourage, whatever language we end up with, that when someone feels as if they've been discriminated against and harassment's going on, to report it. And then Knox County Schools will investigate it. And if we don't investigate it, then we need to get sued. Because if we're not gonna stop people from being harassed or discriminated against, then they're only having the list of courts. So whatever we write is fine, but it's how do we do what we do, and how we respond when we don't get it right?
Thank you for that, Reverend Butler. Any more discussion on this one? All right. Moving on to C or D? I know they kinda go together, but... Yes, Ms. Bike?
I'm just going to echo the same comments that I had on B. And that I feel the same way. I understand that the federal law will always be there, and for however long it's there. And I agree with Reverend Butler that we need to take this seriously. I also understand that kind of clarifying, going back to B, I'm so sorry, I agree with Mr. Dupler as well, that clarifying number 11 would be great. But I do think that sometimes having the words is important in a way of holding a place. But that's all, thanks.
Mr. Triplett?
Mr. Triplett, will you change that word on all those? And I don't know, and we could obviously vote on it, if somebody wants to go back to the other way, but just change that to "investigate," and then we can vote on it that way. I also, I just, I support, Mr. Dupler's change "on any basis." I think it broadens it more than narrows it. I think it, you know, now what it looks like in the court of law and how that gets interpreted, I mean, I don't know that we can make that determination, but, you know, I think truthfully, Mr. Butler, we're all listed here somewhere, right? I mean, we're all of some race, color, creed, you know, that we're all there. But I think "on any basis" kinda opens it up a little more and doesn't narrow it to just merely those, that list of, that list. So I would support the change to "on any basis."
Ms. Templeton? I leaked up, and there's more lights. Ms. Templeton, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, and I would just say respectfully that I feel that the current words have been tested and proven, and I wouldn't want Knox County to be the testing ground for new language.
Reverend Butler?
Yes, I thought I was through, but I did wanna respond to Mr. Triplett. So if any other basis opens up more, I'm all for that. I think that anyone who gets harassed, anyone who's discriminated against, should have a right, have a law for them. But if we're really talking about expanding, add something and not take away everything else, if we're really talking about expanding. So you have those items already there, and then you add "and," or you add "or," any other basis. That's how you expand. You expand by adding to, you don't expand by taking away. And what has happened is, is taken away. Taken away those groups who have experienced discrimination documented, recorded, over time. The system, as well as individuals, have discriminated against them. So, and you're taking those out, those out, and you're replacing it with any basis. So that is not an expansion, that's a replacement. So if you wanna expand, put a "and," "or," any other basis, and you still have that covered.
Yeah. One of the things that Mr. Dupler and I actually talked about last week too was, is if there is a way, that's loud, I apologize for screaming, if there was a way to combine them. And while we didn't get to the point of, you know, enumerating all the things, but we did talk about saying, you know, not to be discriminated, for J-180, for example, not to be discriminated against on any basis, including, so it's "on any basis," including but not limited to sex, race, color, creed, religion, national origin, disabilities, or any other federally identified protected area. We did talk about bringing that to the board as an option that would have all of the language there, that would also include, just ensuring that we've got that precedent as well. So I would like to have a discussion about that. And the same language would happen on 210 as well, discriminated against on any basis, including but not limited to, et cetera. So, yeah, and I've got that language, if that's something that we'd be willing to discuss.
Anyone else? Did you have?
No.
No? Okay. All right, moving on to E or F? G or H? I or J? Yes, Sophia? Oh, Sophia, I love your letterman jacket, by the way.
Thank you. I was just had a question about J. Actually, me and my friends were talking about this today, and I told them something, I figured I was wrong. So does this mean, like, if we took a dual enrollment class, five points would be added to our grades from the, like, the grade we received from the professor?
Yeah, Dr. Wilson, he can help answer that, Sophia.
Thank you, Betsy. Ms. Anderson, sorry. The, yes, that's exactly what I mean. So the uniform grading policy is one that's always been around and has, is how, if you take advanced academic coursework, AP coursework, things like that, that additional points get added to those early post-secondary opportunities. The state board policy changed for this current school year, so that, well, previously, a dual enrollment course, when we got a grade from a post-secondary institution, it added four points. The state board rule has changed it now, five points. So it's an adjustment to that.
Thanks. I was just a little confused because last year I took two dual enrollment classes, and I didn't see any points added on to the score I already had, but if it...
So one reason for that may be, and then again, just depending on how the post-secondary institution reports that back to the school, you'll see a conversion chart in that policy. It's my understanding the majority, I think with one exception, report back a letter grade to us. So when we get a letter grade, we have to have a way to convert that to a numerical score in order to add that to the high school transcript. It doesn't change anything on the college transcript, changes it on the high school transcript.
Thank you.
And I just wanna clarify too, this one needs to be approved on first reading because it needs to go into effect immediately.
Yeah, ideally, I think for our counselors who will be doing those conversions, that actually will start in December, kinda bleed over into January as they finalize those, but ideally, if we can do that on a first reading, if everybody's comfortable with that, it would be, it'd be best.
Okay. With that said, does anybody have any other questions on this one or discussion on this policy? All right, moving on to grants. A or B? C? Or D? All right, moving on then to contracts. A or B? Or C? All right. Moving on then to regular agenda items. A? Or B? No? All righty. Mr. Triplett? Do we have public forum speakers?
Thank you, Madam Chair, we do. We have two, so Candace Banister. If you will state your name and county residence, you'll have three minutes.
Candace Banister, Knox County resident. One afternoon in September of 2017, my phone rang as I was driving down I-40. It was Will's attorney. He told me that he had been contacted by KCS, and you had concluded the investigation. He told me that KCS said they had not really found much evidence that the admin had bullied our son, but that Mrs. Banister, me, had pressured the boys for information and pressured them to get tattoos. I had to pull over to the side of the road. I knew this was not true. I knew I had not asked Will's friends any questions. I knew that they were impressed with our tattoos, but I did not ask them to get tattoos, much less pressure them. One of the boy's moms told me that several of the guys wanted to get tattoos. Did it warm my heart that his sweet friends wanted to get a tattoo? Of course it did, my son was dead. But I told them that I would never regret getting my tattoo, that they should wait until they were of legal age to make that decision. When the investigator called, I told her about the boy's reaction to our tattoos. That she would twist the things this way was a shock. I couldn't talk to anyone for several days. She knew that the boys were, that we were very concerned for the boys, and that saying that I had done something to pressure those boys or hurt them in any way would certainly hurt me. The only question I ever asked any of the boys was of the boys who asked to speak at Will's service. I asked them to only speak for about five minutes, as it could get drawn out, and I asked them if they would help us with a playlist for my son's memorial service. Let that sink in for a second. Have you ever had to make a playlist for your son's memorial service? Finally, I contacted some of the boys' moms and told them what was said about me. They said their boys didn't feel that way and that they themselves appreciated our concern for their son's well-being. As an educator, I have always been acutely aware of what I say to other people's children, and I'm extremely sensitive to someone saying something about me that I've done to a child that is untrue. One mom suggested that perhaps the investigator could manipulate the questions to get a desired answer. That would come as no surprise to anyone who has ever filled out a survey on Survey Monkey for the district. I called the deputy law director's office and asked to see the report. He told me there wasn't one. A state mandated investigation doesn't require a report. How does anyone know an investigation was done? As a KCS teacher, I had to report the outcome of a spelling test in my PLC weekly, but a state mandated investigation needs no report? In November, I was told, well, we'll get that information to you. The investigation, the investigator last contacted me on January 29th, 2018, to tell me she was working on that report, and no, I still don't have it. Our son had taken his life in April, and this is how my employer responded. Why? Because KCS had circled the wagons, and I was on the outside of that circle now because I asked questions, pointed out how policies were not followed, pointed out how and by whom our son was bullied. Even in the face of the loss of our son and two other students to suicide, in the spring of this admin's first year at this school, you chose to shield him despite his history of bullying, and you are still covering for that bully today. When you protect a bully, you become one. Thank you.
Michael O'Malley. Michael, if you'll state your name and county residence, you'll also have three minutes.
Thank you. Michael O'Malley, Knox County, and I'm talking about 7B on the agenda, although 7C and D are similar, as we've talked about. So I'm an English teacher at Carter High School, as well as a parent of two children in Knox County Schools. And this board's just discussed that it's legally permissible to in some way preserve the language specifying protected groups of people in our policies. So when we have a change to policy that removes the list of protected groups, as we do tonight and on Thursday, we're outside of what's legally mandated into the realm of rhetorical decisions. We need to recognize that this is not just an inclusion of on any basis, but also an exclusion of that list of protected groups. On a literal level, on any basis, may also cover these groups, but we need to recognize what the exclusion of actually listing out the groups could mean to people on a rhetorical level, that KCS is now unwilling to specify that it will protect the groups that have historically been most prone to the unfair treatment that these policies are meant to address. Perhaps that's an uncharitable reading of KCS's intentions, but we need to reflect about why people might jump to that conclusion. We could go back just a couple of years to the deactivation of the Alliance for Educational Equity in 2022, or just a year before that, when that task force's policy recommendations were rejected by the board. Or the fact that this is the third time since 2017 that the Law Department has recommended the removal of some or all of these group protections from KCS policy. Or we could just go back to last month's meeting in which a majority of this board voted against modifying the policy change to preserve the list of protected groups, despite that modification still conforming to the letter of the law. So intentionally or not, what this art could signal is that KCS doesn't want written in its policies that it will protect historically marginalized groups. And to me, it seems like the easiest way to prove that that isn't the case is to find some way to explicitly in policy specify that you will still protect these groups. In November, Mr. Dubler made clear that as long as KCS accepted federal funding, it would require us to follow guidelines protecting these groups from the federal government, even if those groups were omitted from our policy. But what if the federal government law changes? What if Tennessee rejects federal education funding if some have floated? And even if those cases don't occur, I'm not comforted by rhetoric of, as long as the federal government makes us, we'll protect these groups. An ethos that is not particularly flattering to KCS's intentions. Is our district protecting these groups only because the federal government told us to, or do we actually believe that these groups need protection? I have to say, the way that these board conversations have gone surrounding these issues in which there's resounding silence from the majority of people who voted against changing this, I have to say that it makes KCS seem eager to wriggle out of protecting the vulnerable, and if that's not true, then show it written in policy. In short, please vote against these changes and vote for some amendment that preserves the language of protected groups. Thank you.
That concludes public forum, Madam Chair.
We'll move on to board forum. Sophia?
Hello. I'm coming from a place of not supporting either side, really, but I just wanted to make everyone aware and just like get wheels turning. Hall's has, Hall's is senior leadership classes recently discussed uniforms, and I've talked to a couple of people within the school. The principal is, he's for it and, you know, but he's not like, I'm going to die on this hill, but our academy coach is very for it to roll out with the academies. And I was just wondering people's opinions on this, what they would think. I know that Fulton has something with shirt colors for each of the academies, and I think that that's something that our academy coach really likes because it's kind of unifying, like, yeah, we're all part of this academy, but I just wanted to put this on your all's minds to think about.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Reverend Butler? That's, oh, okay. Yeah.
I do want to lift up, and I'm going to go to a note here so I get it right. I had an opportunity to attend Austin East flagship celebration today, and it was a celebration that was done at Fulton High School, Austin East High School, and Central High School tomorrow. And Mr. Superintendent, you can help me out if I get anything wrong. But the flagship program is a program that University of Tennessee has throughout the state, across the state, about 54 high schools across the state. It's a scholarship to students from that school that pays for their tuition and fees for all four years. They have to do everything that every other student has to do to be accepted at UT, but it's a program that's designed to help those who have, as a, as a group, found difficulty in getting into college. But they have to do everything else everybody else have to do. And today, they had five students at Austin East who got early acceptance, and so they are officially have been accepted to UT. They, they had the orange, and we had a great celebration. I meant to bring my little, you know, thing, but I left it in the car. But it was really a great celebration for these five students, and also they had a number of juniors there who were looking on, who are looking with anticipation at meeting that challenge next year. But it was wonderful programming, and I really am pleased with Knox County Schools to have that relationship with UT.
Awesome. Ms. Templeton?
Great. Mine is actually along the same lines. I went to Fulton today where they were the first recipients of the scholarship. They were the first, okay, I'm going to get this wrong, but I'm going to say it again. They were the first kids to find out that they were accepted into UT with a scholarship in the world, is how they said it. And it was just really amazing, and it's wonderful to watch kids' faces light up and their families be so proud of the work that they have done, and to see the collaboration between Knox County Schools and UT with this flagship program and early acceptance and all the things, and it also terrified me because I have a child going that direction, so, and all the things I need to do, that she needs to do. Clarification. But it was really wonderful, and so congratulations to all the future Fulton graduates as they take their next steps.
Ms. Faun, now Ridley?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a brief statement. Board members who are on this board, remember that we are elected by the people of Knox County, whether they voted for you or not. And this country, I feel, was built on compromise, and compromise is essential to protecting the students and staff of Knox County, and we are elected to, we are charged with the responsibility to protect all of our students. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Mr. Triplett?
I just want to say that, Mr. Dubler, we had some serious discussion today, but it's very hard to take you seriously in that suit. And does that suit light up?
Oh, thank you for bringing that up.
I do think that publicly, we need to have that suit light up in this meeting. Do you feel comfortable doing that?
I agree.
I think we need to see it lit up. I mean, I just think that's fair.
So, if I may, Madam Chair.
Please, Mr. Dubler.
I'll say this, so I'm walking into Dollar General trying to get a last minute gift, so that kind of tells you where I am already anyways, and I'm walking up to the counter and the cashier says, are you wearing pajamas? And I'm like, well, it's pretty close, pretty close, yeah. So there you go. Yep.
And I believe you have, you have multiple suits. Yes. Maybe we'll see, see another one on Thursday.
That's all I got.
That's all I got. Well, I mean, that's good, that's good stuff. Ms. Pike?
I do appreciate your suits and that they light up. It does bring a little joy to some of these meetings. I hope that everyone had a really great holiday and was able to enjoy some time off with loved ones. I wanted to just touch on the incident from West High School that I know many people have heard about and have definitely been affected by. And I've gotten a lot of emails, and I apologize that I have not been able to respond to any because it's been something that's definitely been weighing on me. I know that, you know, we've had a lot of things at West High School, and a lot of parents are worried, and I take it very seriously, especially because my children will be there very soon. But not just because my children will be there, but because I want safe schools for everyone. And so I really want to urge people to think about, if you are a gun owner, being a responsible gun owner, and what responsibility you have in that, and safe storage, and education, I think is very important on how to use guns. I come from a long line of gun owners, and I even took hunting safety in high school where I learned how to shoot guns. And I think being responsible is really important. But I also want to thank our security team, Dr. Reiswick, Dr. Spies, for the swift action that they took. But I also hope that we will be innovative about solutions that can really put parents and students a little more at ease at West High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
I know this is our meeting before Christmas, but it feels like a Thanksgiving meeting since we just finished that. I'm still digesting everything.
Still think it's Halloween.
Yeah, right? The candy's still around. I just wanted to say thank you to all of our educators and our administrators and everybody in our schools. I have really enjoyed the last few months, getting to spend time at each of my schools and getting to know the people there, and everything that they pour into our students just shows when we hear about the reward schools or the governor's civic seal being, being given out to several of our schools here in Knox County for the first time. And when you see them in action, you can see why we have such amazing schools. So thank you to all of our educators and everybody who works so hard for our students.
Thank you. Mr. Wright? Ms. Christie?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks, Steve, for stealing my board forum comment about the suit, but I do appreciate the light and scary, just so you know. And also, because I know that she will not brag on herself, I just want to give out a shout out to our student rep who read to the children on the Three, was it the Three Rivers? Yeah. Over the weekend, her momma sent me a picture. It was so sweet, so, yeah. So thank you for doing that and being such an awesome representative of our students.
That's really neat. I just want to say too, that this Friday evening is a graduation for our school security officers, and I don't know, if you haven't been to one of these graduations, it is something else. I mean, they work so hard, and I'm so proud of our school officers, and it is, it is just such an amazing event to go to, if you are ever free to go. That is this Friday evening, and I can have Ms. Coatney send you the details if you'd like to attend. But it, it makes me proud to be part of Knox County Schools when you go to that. And, you know, we are coming off Thanksgiving, Christmas is in three weeks, so I am so grateful for everything that our educators do, the families that are so involved in our schools. And I know it's going to be a crazy month for teachers, and, you know, there's going to be lots of parties and lots of good things going on in the schools, but I know it is a busy time, so I do feel blessed to be part of the school system. And with that, we are adjourned, and I'll see you all Thursday.